Okay, bids and requests for proposals. Town Administrator?
Did you?
Requests authorization to waive advertised bills for printing tax bills. Mr. Wojcicki?
Oh.
Mr. President, Tony Lynn will explain the details once again, but just to put up a frame around the issue, the town currently hires out tax bill printing services on a very bare bones basis. It's a print shop, and they get a file that's downloaded to them, and they simply print the data that they are given. We could do that again, and in the past, what the town has done is done that without a bid, without a competitive bid. It's been waived. I'm not comfortable with that. The total spending is over the limit for not going to bid. So those print shop services would be very competitive, and we would probably get multiple responses for a job of that nature. So I'm not comfortable with a $4,000 or whatever dollar it is expenditure that's not being released according to the rules. But there's also an alternative which begins to approach the parameters of sole sourcing, because if we were to have our financial backbone, our financial software provider give us a lot more richness, they could not only print the bills for us, but they could help us manage those accounts that are accidentally overpaid, plus rolling accruals from past years, overdue balances. And as a matter of administration, things would get much easier. I think I've captured it in a nutshell, but if Tony Lynn wants to go into detail, she's been waiting patiently, so I won't steal any more thunder from her.
Well, that's exactly it. This year, we not only looked for the printing of the tax bills, but we were also looking to take it a step further as far as services to the town. And just going out to a printing company, we're not allowed to, we're not able to provide any history. So for instance, if there was any delinquencies on the account, the new tax bill does not reflect that. So you may think your account is current when in actuality you have past due amount. The flip side of that is credits. Whenever we've had any credits that are due to the customer, we've been refunding, which is a very timely and also expensive process, because it's two steps in our office, then it goes down to the treasurer's office, where they do a number of steps, actually cut the check, return the check to us, we mail the check, and then the check is not cashed. So the treasurer's office is sitting on a number of uncashed checks that she is now wondering what to do with. So a way to resolve these issues was what prompted me to look into how to resolve the issues, and the best way to resolve the issues is if we used Vision Government Solutions, which is formerly known as Opel, so it is this company that we've been working with for the past 10 years, and they have the ability to print the bills, carry any credits forward, and so that credit would be automatically deducted from what is due past history, or delinquent accounts would also be reflected there. So that is the way I wanted to go this year. But if we do put it, the trouble with putting it out to bid, the bid process, was I didn't know how to quite word what I wanted to do as far as the technology aspect of bringing in the history. I approached Vision, and I said, can you provide us with a file that another printing company could do exactly what we want to do? And their response was, they can do a custom export file, there is an additional fee for it, however, they could not do it under the time that we needed it done for this year. So if we would like to move forward and really just move forward as far as technology and providing the taxpayer with more efficient information, this may not be the year to put it out to bid, because we can't get that history on the bill. Or we can do what we've done in the past, is just print a bill and then look into this next year, but I don't recommend that, because I think there's a very strong need for providing this history on the bill, and there's other services that, once we start doing that, we can move forward in the right direction as far as taxpayers being able to view their accounts online. There's so many add-ons that we could move towards, that if we use an outside company and just every year use a custom export, we're never going to achieve that goal. So it's really, my biggest concern is time. The Financial Town Referendum is May 20th. By the time we get the tax rate and we reconcile our end that we're ready to go out to print, there's another week or so that's gone by, and then the production of the tax bills. I don't know if we could, at this point, go out to bid and get the tax bills out in a timely manner for a July 1 payment. The taxpayers are already not happy with the quick turnaround that we're already giving them, because the bills are going out late June, and we're saying they're due July 1. So I think that if the town chooses to perhaps go out to bid, perhaps next year might be a better time if we went out to bid, say in January, and then Opel would have ample time to provide this custom export. That might be a better scenario, but that's not the scenario I support, because I think that Vision can provide all of our needs in a timely manner and provide the taxpayers and give them the best services.
My question to you is, Opel or Vision?
They're the same company.
Has this ability now?
They have this ability. I have a letter from them today that said they could provide the bills and the services that I'm looking for this year. But I didn't get this letter till almost 3 o'clock this afternoon, so it's not included in your packet.
What would the cost be?
The cost?
Is it the purchase of software?
No, because they have, the software's already in existence, and they just have the ability to...
Turn a switch.
Yep. And if they, right now, they have the ability to create a file, it's an export file, that just gives current information, none of the history that we're looking for, or the rolling over of the credits. So Opel's bid this year was in the ballpark of, here it is, the printing alone is $5,794. And then the postage, the postage isn't going to change no matter which printing company you use, they all use the bulk postage mailing. This is slightly more expensive than Document Technologies, which we have used in the past, but we also didn't get the services that Vision can provide us as far as cleaning up the receivables and letting taxpayers be aware of the actual amount that they owe.
It's a $1,300 difference, right?
It's, well, it's an increase in $1,300 over Document Technologies, which is the company we've used in the past.
And is that who we used in the past to print our bills?
To print our bills, yes.
Does this, does the Vision system offer a pathway to digitizing and having an online portal for taxpayers?
It does, and that's why I'm saying it's the next phase in, you know, having so many more taxpayer services as far as online availability, paying online, just...
That's the ticket.
All right, so approximately it was $4,400 for the other company.
$4,400 for the other company this year, which would, again, print the bills, which is what we've been doing in the past, or the $5,794 to use Vision Services.
So there's a delta here of about $1,300. I don't know what going hourly rates for the treasurer, or any person on her staff, or you, or anyone on your staff to do all of this reconciling, but does it come close or exceed the $1,300 delta we're talking about here?
I don't know about exceed, but it certainly is a problem that she came to me and said, we need to fix this, because it's not working for her office, and it's really time consuming. This month alone, we did 64 overpayment checks, which we mailed, which doesn't sound like a lot, but when you're touching or dealing with that check six to eight times between entering, you know, not the same taxpayer gets the same refund every year, so all that information has to be typed in manually, and then to, again, then not have them cashed, it's creating another problem.
So in the absence of detailed numbers, I would argue that it's got to be close to $1,300 in lost productivity, so might as well invest that $1,300 in something that's going to get us both short and long-term gain for the town and the taxpayers.
Is that a budget line item? What's the budget for that?
The printing of the tax bills and the postage comes out of the tax collector's budget, and there is adequate money to cover the printing and postage this year for either Vision or whatever company we choose.
So that $5,750 is covered?
Yes.
My recommendation comes down to the future option of being able to pay your bill online with a credit card, and even if you're stuck at the registry and you can't renew one of your pieces of paperwork because there's some unknown balance back at Town Hall, you don't have to come flying back here live and go back to the, having done it, I've got the T-shirt, but back then the registry was in one sock, and I wouldn't come when I could do it, but I can see there's a tremendous inconvenience to just a very small group of people. It affects how they feel about the town and our efficiency as an organization.
But I think from a, just a general taxpayer, consumer expectation perspective, it is 2014, I transact all my other business in my consumer world, online, why can't I pay my taxes online too?
Right, that's another add-on, but it is a door that's open by going this way that's not open if you just print the bills.
But that, we get that a lot with people saying, like with the not having their delinquent amount on their bill. Well, this is the amount you told me I owed, well, we couldn't provide you with the delinquent amount, because we use a printing company to, you know, to produce the bills. People don't understand that, because they're used to, you know, the technology being able to offer that right now.
And this is a long-term kind of question, but is there an option, an opportunity for us to, I have to imagine a large chunk of these tax bills are going out to mortgage servicers.
Well, we don't mail the tax bill to the mortgage services, we mail them to the property owner, because we can't track all the mortgage services that are out there. So we mail them to the property owner, but a lot of the larger banks have the ability to go into Opel and retrieve the information.
That's what I'm talking about. Is there, so, I'm trying to look at, yeah, reducing redundancies wherever we can, and if we're doing work for doing work's sake of sending somebody a tax bill that doesn't need a tax bill, because it's taken care of, and as long as they can access it online if ever they need to, having that paper copy is...
Well, moving forward with one, some of those services that could be added on, once you get fully online, you can opt out of even having your tax bill mailed to you.
Oh, I love that idea.
Your tax bill could be emailed to you, or you could just opt out, because you know your mortgage, you know, servicer's going to retrieve electronically, but we don't have any of those capabilities right now, because of the way we're producing our bills.
And it'll, it'll cut down on the number of times a year I call your office for you to scan and send me my tax bill.
I vote for new technologies.
Yeah, absolutely. So what is the, do we have a hang-up there?
It seems to be one.
Well, the hang-up is that you're, you need, if you're going to do this, you need to basically make a finding, for this one, that you basically have a sole source, which is Opel at this point, and so you're therefore going to waive the bid process. It's one, so two motions essentially, one to waive the bid process and the second to award it. And, you know, if you want to add anything about requirements that go out to bid next year, I mean, clearly it can't keep happening year after year after year, however it's done, whether it's be just, just the printer, or a whole unified technology, it's got to go out to bid, given the fact that it's May...
What if, what if we made this part of the ongoing contract?
Yeah, that's what I was...
Well, that is, yeah, that is something that was discussed, and if we are happy with, you know, the production of the bills, which I really am confident that we will be, it's something that we could just include in the Vision contract, because we're always...
And negate the need for the RFP altogether.
We just go out to bid once, right?
Well, I don't know, how far are we, how long is the Vision contract?
It's on an annual basis.
So, no, I don't think, you can't just keep amending it, you've got to have the whole Vision contract out to bid at some point. You can't keep going, you know, you can do it three years, but beyond that, you've got to rebid the whole thing.
But even if we did do that, it feels like the RFP for the Vision contract is of a scale and scope that's more in line with kind of the longer-term technology slash consumer taxpayer experience that it feels like we're striving towards, instead of having to go out to bid for this and then go out to bid for a printing service.
The way, the way I look at it, there are two different, there are two diverging tracks here. One is, do you just go and print the bills this year, or do you go to the electronic thing? If you're just going to print the bills this year, then I really think you have to at least, even if you're not actually formally bidding it, I think you have to solicit multiple proposals, since it could easily be done, there's not a differentiated service there. Any printer can do it, if I'm providing you with it, how much are you going to cost to print, fold stuff, post it, stamp it, and send it out? If on the other hand, you are determining that you want to take that step now down towards the electronic road, then I think it's legitimate to find that it's a sole source because of your existing contract, but I'm just saying that can't keep going on year after year.
No, what we're suggesting is we wrap that into the overall Opel contract, and when that goes out to bid, it's part of the package.
Right, it's part of the package, exactly.
Yeah, exactly.
And do we actually go out with a real RFP every year?
We've had Opel for 20 years now.
So basically...
We did go out when we, when we did, we spoke, we went out at that time to services, and the ten citizens, we've got every other department, I mean, we've got the building officials.
So we don't go out to bid every year for the contract, right?
Go out for Vision now, Opel is Vision.
Yeah, they have the same.
We've gone out to rebid with it, everything.
Yes, Mr. Roberts?
Yes, if I may. The software that Tony Lynn's talking about is quite vital to both our offices. There is multiple pieces to this Opel slash Vision software suite. There's the building officials' package, there's my tax administration package, and there's the tax collection process. If we were to go out to bid on an annual basis, that could turn quite chaotic, because if you're currently using a vendor, let's just use Vision, who we're currently using, and there's another company out there that does this type of work called Munis, if they were to come on in and bid strictly on a tax collection software, then there's a whole lot of integration issues. If they have the ability to also have a tax administration system bid out in my office that is compatible to the tax collections, then we have to worry about the building official. And the reason why the building official's software is important is because there's an import-export between my ownership and the building permit history. So there's all these multiple pieces working together, so if you were to go out to bid on one particular package just for tax collections, it would cause possibly a multitude of issues, not only between the systems communicating properly, but just, can you imagine transferring all of our data that's been year after year in tax collections to a brand-new system, going through testing and such, finalizing, getting used to that software, and then rebidding it the following year, and then it could go back to Vision, I mean, it's just...
Do you have a separate contract?
We do have annual maintenance agreements.
That we need to recall with one another.
Meaning that's what we're paying for. Once we, and I forget, Nancy would probably know best, when Opel first came on board, there may have been a bid process at that point in time, but the only thing that we're really paying for right now is just an annual maintenance agreement. We're maintaining the same software, they're just providing us with updates and any software modifications that we do need. As far as sending out a file to any print company, I'm not sure if that's exactly true, because there is a certain specific file format that we send out to the current printer that we have been using. Last year, because of a slight change that Opel made, the printer couldn't read that file properly. So there was a small fee incurred as far as making a modification to the file format that the printer was receiving, so it becomes very complicated, so I do think that it's definitely, to help resolve some of these concerns, I think it's definitely something that, you know, me, Tony Lynn, building official, and Matt should sit down and probably explore further, but just my two cents worth, I think going as far as this year's concerned, going to Vision, you know, we also hear the complaints in my office when it comes to billing and motor vehicle back taxes and such, people are kind of upset that information's not printed on a tax bill that we could easily provide, and again, it goes a huge way as far as customer service and the reception, and Tony Lynn kind of hit on the head a lot. We do get complaints even in my office as far as, well, tax collector told me I owe this, this is the bill that you guys sent me, but there's nothing on there but a past due amount, so.
That's an issue.
It is.
This basically is what sounds like to me a core system for municipality services and operations, and in financial institutions, this is what they go through. So banks have a core system for originating loans, online account opening, so on and so forth, and they don't go out to bid every year for these. This is what's called technical debt. So we are now basically collecting technical debt and how we handle data, how we integrate with our other departments, and changing that, it gets very, very costly, not just in time, but, you know, also money. So there has to be a way for us to consolidate these services, so we have a core system that handles this, all these parts of the business that we have every...
And perhaps the contract gets extended.
It doesn't need to be bid every year. No. No, we're just saying, given the number of years that it hasn't been bid, it seems like it should be bid next year, but it doesn't have to be bid for an annual contract, it can be bid for a longer-term contract, but it just can't keep going on and on and on with annual renewals.
Without a bid.
And you're right, it would be a bid or proposal for a suite of programs and services, rather than just bidding each one separately, so...
And the point I'm trying to make is, if you do choose something that has a suite of programs and services, then you kind of have to stay with it.
Well, at least for a while, yeah.
Especially if you, if you invest all the time in putting the data into one, one format that the system can talk to, no matter whose department it is, all the systems are the same, basically core, then it's going to be even more difficult to get off of that.
It's a stickiness factor.
I just keep purchasing modules to the system, and by the way, when we went out to bid, Opel did bid on the printing of the tax bills, but at the time, I don't think they had all the technology they have now, that it's gone through Vision, and they were way more expensive, and they in fact told us, they just couldn't compete, they were like $13,000 to Document Technology, or somebody else that might have been, you know, $7,500, whatever. So they did actually bid in the original one as well. But you can just keep adding on to the modules, we're just saying, what if Document Technology comes back and says, hey, I've always, you know, been able to bid or get in and do this, and now you're not using them? But it would be a source to the software that you have, so.
Well, school systems have the same problem. In the school system, we have the student information service, so, you know, I worked in Westport, we had MMS Generations that houses all the data for students, for student information, and then you have all the system that we use in Blackstone called AspenX2. So I made the pitch, hey, why don't we go onto this other system, because they actually have better support, so on and so forth, nope, we have too much invested into this software, and migrating all this data would take us a year.
Data migration is a huge issue, going from one computer system to another.
So can I, just to try to move things along here, can I make a motion that we bypass the competitive bid process for the tax bill printing service and give the Town Administrator and Tony Lynn the authority to move forward with?
Vision.
Vision for this year's tax printing.
Second.
Tax bill printing.
Yeah, as sole source.
As sole source. That was the phrase I picked.
We have a motion, and a second, any further discussion? I think this technology, I mean, in the long term, I think it's going to save us money.
Absolutely.
And provide for our, our people, you know, our taxpayers to be able to look at things and get more information. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony Lynn. Okay, Town Administrator, request authorization to advertise position of building and maintenance foreman.
Mr. President, Mr. Martin's position became vacant on April 21st. The union was given the opportunity to post this position, there were no bidders from any existing Aspen members. I'm asking for the ability to go public with this and get back to the straight and narrow and have enough people here to get all the work done. I've learned my lesson with these advertisements, it's the little literal interpretation of the language therein, so I've taken the time to be very careful about how I drafted this one when it goes out to the newspaper.
Question.
Literal.
Very literal.
Exactly.
But to, to the defense of those who are literal, the, the Labor Council was of the point of view that publishing these things in the newspaper, one must be very literal to be safe, so.
That's going to be one expensive add-on. I mean, that's a little...
Well, not if you print it very small.
If we print it small, how about...
10-point font, yeah.
Where are you intending to put them?
I don't know that we need to go through the expense of Monster and the Providence Journal and the things that we did prior. I'd be more than happy with the Fall River paper and the Newport paper, and Secana, it's not very expensive, so if we could...
Those three, okay.
Yeah, we've got 67 applications for the other position, many of them were very qualified, so I'm comfortable ramping back the expense, we'll probably get just as many.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a second.
I have a motion, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Town Administrator, items and announcements.
Couple of things, very quickly, you may have noticed in the Art Council or Art Committee's minutes, that on May 18th, from 2:00 to 4:00, there's a reception here at Town Hall for the artist providing the work that's newly installed here in Town Hall, Patricia Shanley. It's a fantastic show. The show before this with the students, you know, there was some disappointment that wasn't enough publicity to the outstanding work that they had done, so I'm going to do everything I can to draw attention to this very nice show here in Town Hall. You may also have noticed in the monthly report from the Senior Senate Director, mysterious deficiencies from the Fire Marshal referred to several months in a row, I just caught up to that, they were very minor things. We didn't have labels in the circuit breaker box, and we had one plug in the ceiling that wasn't closed in a box, so those two things, which sound just awful in the monthly report, were very minor and they've been fixed, so we are reading the reports and catching up to unfinished business. The Friends of Tiburon Libraries Annual Book Sale will be Saturday, May 31st, at the Ranger School from 10:00 to 3:00, and the proceeds of that book sale support the summer reading program for all ages, so hope folks will support that. Lastly, this has been a very active two weeks at Tiburon Materials over on Fish Road. We've had many, many constituent complaints about the noise and the vibration from detonations. So this is a, a letter that I have sent to the Fire Marshal, it's a public record, it was sent out today, I won't read the whole thing, but my approach to this is, it's always better to ask state officials to exercise the authority they already have and see if they won't engage in that activity. So in the case of blasting, which is overseen by the state Fire Marshal, they have the opportunity, when situation warrants, to engage in seismic monitoring. If they don't, they have the opportunity to review the records, so anybody engaging in detonations has to document the size of the charges used, the amount of material they're trying to move, and the outcome. So I'm asking Fire Marshal Jack Shadier to either review those records and share them with the town, so that we can see that they're complying with the regulations, and if there are no data sources or data points, I'm asking him to consider using seismic monitoring to help us out. We all recognize, many towns have quarries, this is an ongoing forever issue, as long as somebody's blasting, there will always be people who are unhappy, even if... will always be people who are unhappy, even if the charges are within regulation. But the starting point is to figure out whether or not they're even complying with the law. So I'm asking the state Fire Marshal, as soon as they get a response, I'll share it with the council. That's all I had for announcements, Mr. President.
Counsel announcement comes and questions. Counselor DiMedeiras.
I put this on the agenda. It's the Budget 1415, because I've been asked a lot of questions around town, the difference between the two budgets that will be presented at the town referendum. Mr. Katz's budget is exactly what the Budget Committee recommends. He has not changed any line items. It's exactly the same, which we should all be proud of because it is a fiscally responsible budget. And obviously, he felt that way because he did not cut anything. The only difference is, is Mr. Katz wants to take it from the general fund. And the Budget Committee recommends a 1.5% increase, which is seventy-five dollars on a $300,000 hole, which is the lowest ever increase in at least ten years that we could go back to. The Town Council Budget Committee and School Committee discussed and lent this budget. I feel that they have all done a wonderful job at this budget. It is fiscally responsible. It is cut to the bone. And the services we offer are intact. What concerns all of us is that we talked a lot about the general fund and whether or not we would take from the general fund. But because of the library bond that's coming up, and because we felt it was important to keep a good amount of money in there, we decided not to. And I speak for myself. But I think that the council would agree with me. I would like to read a letter that the Treasurer wrote to the citizens and the taxpayers of the town of Tiverton that was presented, that was at the budget hearing.
Hearing.
But was never really read out loud. So I'd like to read this, and maybe it would clear up some of the confusion of the taxpayers. To citizen and taxpayers of the town of Tiverton, in 2011, the Tiverton Town Council adopted a policy entitled Long Term Financial Plan. One of the goals of this policy is to grow and maintain an unreserved general fund greater than what is minimally required by the charter. The unreserved general fund allows us the capability to respond in an emergency situation, reduce borrowing costs, and provides stability in maintaining the town's funds. Growing this fund beyond minimum levels only strengthens the town's financial condition. In 2007, Moody's issued a rating of A2 to the town of Tiverton. At the time of this rating, the town had far less outstanding debt than it does now. Their rating reflected on the town's stable tax base and a satisfactory financial position. However, Moody's specifically cited that Tiverton had, in the past, drawn down its reserve balance, and noted that our ability to restore structural balance and our reserves is and will remain an important rating factor for future borrowing. The town of Tiverton will be going out for a new bond rating this September. In response to required changes reporting our unfunded liabilities, Moody's has developed a new rating.
Mechanism.
No. Yeah, mechanism. This mechanism includes a scorecard, reviewing and weighting the rate as follows. Tax base, thirty percent. Finances, thirty percent. Management, twenty percent. Debt and pension, twenty percent. Review of our general fund balance accounts for fifty percent of the finance review. This is a hefty portion. All of our taxpayers are investing in the unreserved general fund, an investment that must be protected. Tapping into our unreserved general fund could cost us down the road. I urge you to protect your investment in your town. And this is signed Denise Surratt, Town Treasurer. So this should clear up certainly why we all felt, including the Budget Committee, that we needed to maintain this general fund. That's all I have to say. If anyone else wants to say anything else.
Anyone else come counsel on the subject? Counsel Shabat.
Yes. This is the town administrator objectives and goals. Town administrator's been on the job for a little over two months.
I just want to say, Joan, that these, I was directed to just collate them together, and those are the ones that I received and collated. I haven't given them to the town administrator in case the council is now going to tell me, add this, take this. So it's at that stage. I don't want you to think that he's received all this because he hasn't. Presentation on add of change.
Correct. It's just that time is ticking. He's already been on the job a little over two months, and we have to evaluate him in August. So time will slide by very quickly, and we really haven't given him any objectives. That what we expect in this six-month period of time that we'll be evaluating him on in August. So as the town clerk has mentioned, from the responses she received, she collated those items and put them in a document. And whether we want to discuss adding or subtracting any of this tonight is up to the council, or whether it's good to go as is.
I would say that this is probably the preliminary. And it's a good start. And with any position, with goals and objectives, sometimes that's a moving target. And I think that this is a good start. Maybe this should be given to Mr. Wojcicki as a preliminary. I'm sure as we move on, as town business changes, that other goals or objectives may change. So I would think that this would be a basis of which we can either add or delete as we move forward. Because again, I mean, today we know what's in the forefront and what's on our drawing board. But as we well know, that changes very quickly around here. And something that may not be on here may become ten amount to his position. So I have no objections in giving this to Mr. Wojcicki. And then as we either further discuss or as things come up and just either add other objectives or directives that we feel necessary.
I would just, I'm very comfortable with this list, and sure it can change from here. Could change now, could change tomorrow, could change next week. I would like to hand it over to the town administrator and see if he feels, see if you feel, I always hate talking about people in the third person there. See if you feel as if they're measurable, that you have the mechanisms in place at your disposal in which to actually track your work to these goals and objectives. Because when it does come time in August, we want to make sure that there's a, you know, a way of quantitatively measuring or qualitatively measuring this stuff. And if you don't feel that you have the mechanisms in place, then perhaps it then comes back to the council and say, okay, maybe this isn't, you know, the right thing we should be focusing on.
Don't wait on the bill.
Oh, sorry.
Because that's what I was going to add, because I was always writing the list myself.
The consensus of the council that we provided to Mr. Wojcicki.
That's what I was going to add. As I was writing those lists myself to submit, I was also wrestling with the idea, well, how do I, how we measure these things? Because some of these things are very somewhat ambiguous. Oh, find efficiencies in the department. Okay, what does that mean? So possibly next steps, as Bill already alluded to, it might behoove us to have a small get-together meeting. We can discuss how we can measure some of these things. Either he can provide some ideas, we can think of some ideas of ourselves. And we have a, basically, consensus on how, going forward, we can actually do the review process in a measurable way.
I would even challenge, Matt, you to take this, dump it in a document, and tell us how you're going to measure it. And perhaps we review that at the next meeting or at an appropriate time.
You may want to add your own goals and objectives to it after we have two months.
Right. There might be things that you want to do, want to accomplish.
He certainly has a full plate, so.
Yeah, but.
No, we don't have plates, we have platters.
Big platters. Turkey platter size.
I guess getting into would be a trough.
A lot of this is related, though, Joan. A lot of this is related.
And he's made progress on a number of these already.
A number of them already.
So.
Yeah, yeah.
He really has, so. Much to our, much to our relief, he's made progress on a lot of this.
Okay, I just have one thing I'd like to add. Just a reminder that the neighborhood conversation with Congressman Cicilline will be at the Tiverton High School Library on Wednesday, May 14th, at between 5:30 and 7:00 PM. Again, that's at the Tiverton High School Library.
Mr. President, I just have really two quick things. And they might ultimately end up as agenda items at a forthcoming meeting. But the first is on the heels of kind of the Tiverton litter day. Just something I'm very cognizant of, I don't think our litter problem, there are people who toss stuff out windows. I see it on my road all the time. There's some guy who throws a McDonald's bag pretty much every day, full of food, out on King Road. I don't know who it is, but I wait for the day where I can find him. But I think a lot of what we see on the roads that causes a blight on the town, and we're talking about driving tourism and all that sort of stuff, but you're driving around town, you see it, I think a lot of it is just flying out of the back of the recycling trucks, right? It's all plastic. It's all flying out of the back. And, you know, this is just something for the DPW director perhaps to chew on and think about. But, I mean, I think we could nip it in the bud a little bit there. And I don't know how you go about it. We're certainly not the only community to face that.
And I will just piggyback that if you're done, Bill. I was at Grinnell's Beach on Sunday and noticed that there had been substantial activity for litter collection. But in the absence of many barrels, the passersby had ripped open the bags that the people during litter cleanup week had put, and they were stuffing things in there. And by the time, Sunday was very windy. By the time I got there on Sunday, there was trash all over the place. So, you know, we need more barrels. And there's one, there was one barrel way, way on the other side of the toilets. But, I mean.
Some of the trash was at the Grinnell's Beach and stored away.
The only other, the only other thing I have is just, Matt, perhaps something you look into as Recreation Commission and DPW Director. The very, very nice stone wall that is at Town Farm is being slowly dismantled by our youngsters, especially down by the large playground apparatus behind the boys' baseball field, because there's stuff out of there. I spent my Saturday picking up all of those rocks, twenty minutes worth of my Saturday while my daughter was playing, picking up all those rocks because the kids are using them as part of the playground. And the stone wall is being dismantled. There's poison ivy all over that wall. These kids are climbing all over it. Anyway, the long story short is, I don't know if we can try to rebuild the wall a little bit and/or get some signage down there to try to at least help encourage those parents who don't see it as a natural thing to
I would plant more poison ivy.
Get their kids off of this.
Let's defenses.
But it's just, again, it's, that's a really nice place down there, and it's kind of being trashed. So, anyway.
Anyone else? Hey, town solicitor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item K, item K1 is a copy of a decision from the Attorney General regarding an open meeting complaint that was also in connection with a Board of Tax Appeal hearing. And the Attorney General found in our favor and dismissed the complaint. Item K2 is McLaughlin versus Tiverton, and that's an update. And you don't have anything in writing because that happened actually on Friday. Mr. McLaughlin went back to the court, claimed he had not received proper notice of the last hearing. I think I provided you the pleading the last time, which was basically a repeat of all things. The judge did not reopen the case. He did, however, reset the clock. The ninety-day clock to remove the structure started again on Friday, May 9th. So he has ninety days from that point to remove the structure or be fined $200 a day. So that's the status of Mr. McLaughlin.
And is there any possibility that that move gets repeated where the clock is reset? Or, but.
No, no. He was there personally in court. And I, I mean, you know, he may go back and ask for more time. I don't know.
Is there someone who, like, checks up on thirty-day mark, sixty-day mark to see what's the?
Well, there's nothing we can do about it. If he hasn't, if it's sixty days have gone by.
Does the court do that? I mean, does it come up ninety days, oh, it's not done?
It comes up ninety days, and we will check it. And if it's not done, and we will go in, you know, on day ninety-two or three and file a motion for contempt and fines. Item number three, Town of Tiverton versus LAL Construction. An update on that, a couple of things. They had a rather onerous discovery request against the town for a lot of documents. We objected to that. And on last Monday, a week from today, the court basically upheld our objection to their motion to compel and agreed with us that they were asking for way too much stuff. The attorney's words on leaving the court were, well, I guess we'll get it from you as a public record. And we received in the mail last week, the end of the week, a very similar request as a public records request. Although at least with the public records request, they're going to have to pay fifteen cents a page and fifteen dollars an hour after the first hour for the time involved in providing it. And we are formulating our response to it. We might actually file a further objection and say, since the court has determined that it wasn't being reproduced and one of the exceptions to public records or items that are not discoverable in litigation, maybe we're not. I mean, the trouble is, it is actually, they're public records, but it's just the voluminous nature of it. So we are discussing it. In fact, that's what I was out of the office talking to Kate Michelle about earlier in the meeting, how we're going to respond to that. We're going to respond to it initially by informing them that we need more time to put the materials together because they are pretty voluminous. Item four is a claim received. McGuire, this is a claim against the town for a police brutality claim. This will be referred to the interlocal trust for defense.
Can I?
Yes.
Can I just inquire about this? I understand that this is, let me say a couple of things. First of all, I have the utmost respect for the folks on our police department who do a very important, in some cases, a very dangerous job, day in and day out. I know many of those guys personally. I have the utmost respect. Second point, this is only one side of the story. There are allegations in here that we need to follow due process and make sure that we understand all of the facts on both sides so that a clear story is presented and we understand what has actually happened. That being said, I read this with a lot of concern because unfortunately, this isn't the only incident of such aggressive type behavior that I have been made privy to. And I'm not saying that one or two or three incidences create a trend. I'm certainly not saying that this is something that is proliferating. I'm certainly not saying that this is something that is proliferating throughout the entire department. But when I am aware of multiple cases of excessive force being used, that concerns me. So I don't know what the proper due process is here, but I would strongly encourage us to look a little deeper into this matter, in a, in a broad, general sense.
Well, and I would also encourage you of, of any of you, if you do know of any other instances, or even if you don't know but have, you know, heard reports of them, to please provide me with as much information as you do have about them, so we can determine it. Without it, you know, without it, we don't have any way of knowing if it is a pattern or not. It's, it's the claim we receive. And obviously, we haven't had any time to even begin to investigate it. It's come in, we get it, put it on, it's a public document, we put it on the agenda, and then we'll be proceeding.
This is almost two years ago, which seems kind of strange.
Oftentimes, suits are always, are filed shortly before, actually, if it's two years, that's actually pretty good. Usually, it's about just short of three years, because it's just short of the statute of limitations that they're filed. So that obviously makes it harder. I'm not aware.
What is the statute of limitations?
Three years of limitation, three years is the general statute of limitation on this sort of tort. So, you know, I am not aware of this complaint having been received at all. It, it never, it never made it to my attention at the time. Now, there have been, over the years, there have been other claims on all sorts of issues that have come up, you know, with different departments, including the police department, and we've investigated at the time. Actually, those of you who've been on the council, you know, remember litigation reports or, you know, letters that, that say, okay, here's a claim. No, no suit's been filed, but here's a claim, here's what we've looked into, and, you know, what we've done. So we, I do investigate them and take them seriously. But this is the first I'm hearing of this at all. I'm also concerned very much by the allegation that it says no one showed up for district court for the prosecution. It was dismissed. I'm very concerned about that, why that's happening. I mean, yeah, if it's true, it's unacceptable, and I just don't know if it is or not. Usually, we've, you know, we've been very careful just the other side, just in the other way. For example, there was, there was someone, there was a motorcyclist who was going about eighty miles an hour around a school bus and smashed into the back of a police cruiser and was charged with various offenses, and also threatened a civil suit against the town. And we're very careful to make sure, no, we're gonna go make sure we don't dismiss these cases. We don't dismiss any of them, no matter how minor they are, we're gonna make sure we stick with it, so.
Maybe do some, do a little digging for us for the next meeting or two to figure out where we are.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how that'll, I won't say necessarily be that quickly, but we'll be looking into it. And as I said, please let me know confidentially, let me know if you have any other incidents to look at. K5 is a claim, essentially a slip and fall claim against the school department. Again, you know, you're just hearing one side of it, got some pictures of the steps. We'll be forwarding it, it goes to the school department, and the interlocal is their insurer as well. And I don't have anything else to really tell you at the moment, because I don't know any more than what you see here, so. And essentially, that's, the school department has their own legal counsel and insurer set up.
At least when that, that's more recent, it's a year.
Yeah. Okay, K6. This is the, regarding the quarry licensing. And if you'll, excuse me for one second, I have a visual aid. These are the clerk's files on quarries, which are now actually a bit neater and more organized. I'm not blaming the clerk or anything, I'm just saying. I am definitely not. But, so I have been through these. And we are working. Working through this, we have a couple of things. One is, you've got from March seventeenth, the earlier stuff from the planning board about the ordinance, and I know that was continued at the time, there were questions about experts, and I know the administrator has provided you with, you know, information in his weekly reports about not able to find an expert yet. But I think it would be good to move this forward, to schedule this, and get it, get it moving. Because we want to get the licenses going, but we really want to have a comprehensive ordinance that we're licensing people under, not the old ordinance. I would request that you put this down for, that we put this down for hearing in July, because it's gonna be noticed with the twenty-one days. I don't know that we.
July twenty-eighth.
Or the fourteenth. I think you could leave that to Nancy, in my discretion with the timing. Because the, the first meeting in June's the high school, and then the second one is both the last meeting of the year, and we'll pick up the extra stuff that we didn't do at the first meeting in June. So either July fourteenth or July twenty-eighth, we'd have this for public hearing on the ordinance. And then to proceed presumably with August to get the licensing moving forward with the, with all the quarries. At the same time, as Mr. Wojcicki has indicated about trying to get the state to deal with the blasting, and, and further deal with some of the non-conforming issues that we're continuing to have with some of the quarries, that, you know, the whole issue of definitions of what quarries and whatnot would hopefully be resolved somewhat this way, as well as giving us firm ground to move forward on.
The question I have is, there, the major pertinent issue today is the one quarry that we have that's operating. And they're operating without a license. And we had a conversation quite a while ago as to whether or not they should even be allowed to continue their operation, because it's potentially such that they are beyond the scope of what they should be legally allowed to do. There was, there was talk about aerial photographs and surveys done between, I think it was, was it year two thousand that they, no, two thousand and one, that they had to establish a baseline. Where are we on that?
Okay, well, I have met, I and also Kate, we met with them. Their position, just so you know, their lawyer was here and their, their official position is that they're exempt from the earth removal section, because it says, means the extraction or removal of any sand, gravel, loam, topsoil, stone, perenn, including rock and, well, I'm sorry, stopsoil, stone, mineral, clay, or shale from deposits of any tract of land, excluding, however, extracting, removing, digging, mining, or quarrying limestone, rhymlock, rock, or granite. And then it goes on to have some other exclusions. So their, their thing is on its very face, we've excluded their blasting of limestone, limestone.
Excluded the only thing worth my name in the town of Tiverton.
Right. So now, having said that, having made that position that that's their official position, they are nevertheless working with us. They presented some maps already, and we've indicated what we're looking for, and they're preparing other maps. So we are moving forward with them, working, trying to go forward with them, come forward with the licensing process, which will anticipate the idea that we will amend it to make it clear that they are subject to it, and that they would come forward.
Additionally, we were.
I just want to also say.
Oh, go ahead.
Not, we're saying, I mean, we definitely need some independent seismic testing. Hopefully, this marshal will do it. They claim that they have been doing it as well. They claim that their blaster has set up seismic meters, and they're taking readings of, you know, off their property of the levels. Now, they have not yet provided us with any of those readings, but they do claim that they're doing it.
Did we ever receive a document from the, let's call them, the collective residence from Linda Drive, Linda Road? Linda Road? No. We had a guy who was a professional engineer, I think, who, who said he was going to go back home, so he had lived in the neighborhood for forty years, his parents lived in the neighborhood, he was going to survey the neighbors, write down as much detailed information as he could, and then present it to us. He did not do that?
It hasn't come to me, unless it came to the planning board. It hasn't come to our attention here.
That was six or eight months ago, I imagine, right?
It was November, I think.
What's that?
I think it was back in November.
You say February, he says November.
Originally, it was a joint meeting with the planning board.
Yeah, okay. So it was six or eight months ago. I don't remember his name, I think he was wearing a blue.
January, because I wasn't here.
And I've also met with some of the other quarry owners as well, and, you know, indicated what they need.
Yeah.
And they said, yes, yes, we'll do it, and have it provided, or they've said, oh, that's, that's onerous, it's too much, it's too expensive, and.